Begin. Good evening. On behalf of the League of Women Voters and Twin West Chamber of Commerce, I would like to welcome you to the Candidates Forum this evening. The League of Women Voters is an organization that is nonpartisan and volunteer-based. It is organized at the local, state, and national level to encourage citizens to participate in government. While LWV members do study and take stands on issues, we do not endorse nor support political parties nor candidates. The LWV does encourage its members as individuals, as we encourage each of you, to get involved in your community and the political party of your choice. However, the views expressed in this forum are those of the individual candidates and not those of the League of Women Voters. By sponsoring this forum this evening, the League provides an opportunity for citizen participation and exposure to candidates, but again, does not provide an endorsement of any kind. All viable candidates have been invited to participate this evening, and we're happy to have both of them. Tonight, we are doing the forum for Hennepin County Commissioner, District One. In tonight's forum, we're going to give them one minute to do their, or a minute and a half, to do their introductory statements, and then after that, we'll give them one minute to complete all of the questions, the answers for the rest of the questions. We've had questions come in via email, and you'll have those as well. Finally, at the end, you'll be given your final statements. Candidates, the League would like to request that you refrain from making any personal attacks on your fellow candidates. Due to the pandemic, to keep everyone safe, we have no in-person audience for this forum or any others we are conducting. We have been posting email addresses to which questions have been sent and may be sent. During this live broadcast, your questions can be sent to candidateforums@twinwest.com. Our screeners are here to make sure the questions are relevant to all candidates and in this forum, and are not in any way a personal attack of anyone. I'll take this moment to introduce our timekeepers. They will show you when you have 15 seconds to finish your statements. And then they will show you when your time has expired. Please finish your sentence at that time, as I will be directing the speaker, next speaker's turn. Tonight, we have Davana Pittman and Jeff Lundie. So the first question you got in advance. Please tell us about your background and previous civic involvement that support your candidacy for this position. Ms. Pittman?
Good evening. My name is Davana Pittman, and I have lived in New Hope for about five years. I've lived in the district for over 15 years with my husband, Robert, and we raised our children, and they attended Oseo Senior High School and graduated from there. Thank you so much for hosting this forum on tonight. I am a Josie R. Johnson Leadership Fellow, where I learned to solve problems in my community in a very strategic way by attacking problems and solving them and creating a framework to do that. I graduated from the University of St. Thomas with a graduate degree in law enforcement leadership, and from Metro State with a undergrad in criminal justice, juvenile criminal justice. I've worked at the county for 18 years now in public works, public safety, housing, community works, and transit operations, and in administration, and I currently work in disparity reduction. And so, I've spent my life serving my community in many ways on the ground. I was born and raised in the poorest suburb in America, and so, my life has been a battleground for learning how to serve people and take care of my community, and I have tried to do that, and I believe that I've done that to the best of my ability. Thank you so much.
Lundie?
Thank you. My name is Jeff Lundie. Proud to be married to my wife, Jody, who is a, helps first-generation students transition from high school into college. I have two sons, both of whom go to Noka Hennepin Schools. Proud to, currently serving my third term as Mayor of Brooklyn Park. I'm also a member of the League of Minnesota Cities Board, where I help set policy and direction, and also to help other cities succeed. I serve on the Hennepin County Criminal Justice Coordinating Committee, where I work with the full range of the county system, as far as what we really try to do is differentiate between who needs to be incarcerated and those who just need help, whether through addiction. I help serve on the homeless home now program for Hennepin County, where we look at the homeless population and what policies that we can do. As well, I currently serve as a National Board Member of the Cities United, and also a member of my brother's keeper program for the Obama Foundation, where we look at the role of violence in young males of diverse backgrounds, and how that affects their opportunities in life and their outcomes, and so, by trying to lower that impact. Proud also to have served on Hennepin County Library Board, and help, very much proud of the fact that we have expanded library services. I think one of the big questions is, what is the future of library services going to look like in our county as well? First and foremost, I think it's important to stress the fact that I have led the creation of the Blue Line Now Coalition, which is the Coalition of Cities, all of which are in District One, to help try to get the blue line from a plan to execute it into a fully mode of transportation for our residents.
Thank you. What do you see as the county's essential services? In your opinion, what are the top priorities? And this is a one-minute question. We'll start with Mr. Lundie.
I think, I look at government as a layered approach, and the county really provides those services that the county doesn't. So a lot of social services, helping people with addiction, helping people in crisis, helping families who are suffering from those opportunities that they're missing because of addiction or mental health challenges. Also, the county does, in fact, run our criminal justice system, whether it's from the courts to diversionary tactics that we try to do, to law enforcement, to also making sure that when people are out, that maybe potentially people who are, have been on probation, that they get a career and get a path that allows them to be successful. And so, I look at those programs as essential things the county provides, and I want to see that the county works in partnership with cities, because we all are facing the same budget crisis, and we all need to work together to take the taxpayers' dollars and put them to effective use, which is done best when we partner.
Thank you. Ms. Pittman?
Yes. The county has statutory authority and responsibility to take care of certain things first, and those are with vulnerable populations. We know that right now, we're in a crisis with the pandemic, and that, not even at the end of the pandemic, but right now, it's starting to get cold, and so, the county really needs to focus on making sure that vulnerable populations have a place to sleep at night, and that they aren't sleeping outside. We also need to make sure that our children are safe. Our children are also vulnerable, children who are in protective services, protecting that group of folks, and also making sure that we have an opportunity to create jobs at the end of the pandemic. So many people have lost their jobs, so many people are in a situation where they might be evicted from their homes, and so, the county has to really, really pay attention to not only the statutory authority and responsibilities, but the things that we need to take care of immediately after the pandemic.
Thank you. Hennepin County's 2020 budget is $2.5 billion, the second largest government budget in the state behind the state of Minnesota's budget. Do you support increasing or reducing the budget? Explain your answer, Ms. Pittman.
As a constituent and a homeowner, I'd have to give that perspective first. I absolutely would not support raising taxes or increasing the budget, because I believe that families are already going through enough in this incredibly horrific time, and so, I know that people really need a break. I am a homeowner, I also pay taxes, and I think that it's really important for us to consider our residents. At the same time, we have to be really reasonable about what we're going to need as a state and as a community, and I think the hardest thing about being a policymaker is making tough decisions. And so, when we look at that budget, I want to make sure that we are looking at allocations and money that hasn't been spent in previous years, and take a real good look at how we can reallocate those funds instead of raising taxes. But if that's something that we need to do, that's a tough decision that I would have to make if absolutely necessary.
Thank you. Mr. Lundie?
Yes. As mayor, I've had to deal with many tough budgets, make tough decisions. The toughest thing is always to say no. It's always easy to say yes, you make people happy, but saying no is important as well, and sometimes it's to your staff. And so, I think what's important is that, no, we can't increase the budget. And the reason is, is that we have people suffering. We have people who have lost their jobs, who try to struggle to pay rent, they're struggling to pay their home mortgage. We have people who are suffering from illness, where their lives have completely changed. If you think back six months, what it would have been like, your kids going to school, you're not paying for daycare. The fact, the reality is, the COVID economy hasn't really fully affected us, because with the rent eviction moratorium and the mortgage things, we haven't felt the effects of it, and so, things are going to get worse. And so, we need to be prudent with our money, and so, I do not support that, any increase at all. I think we need to look at the effects, not just of taxpayer money, but sales tax. We need to look at the fact of fines and fees. All of these things go into one thing, they come out of someone's pocket, and we need to be mindful of that effect.
Unmanaged invasive species is a growing concern for city and county, public, and private lands. What kind of programs would you support to control invasive species in the county? First responder this time is again, Mr. Lundie.
Yes. As mayor, we've taken a lot, look at invasive species, but I think from the county, they have purview over water. And so, whether it's like Minnetonka with Mississippi, all these different bodies of water, that we all play a role, and the most effective preventive measure is education. It is always cost-not-effective to try to do enforcement and fines. You never can cover that. If you can stop people from making mistakes before they do it, you will always save money and save money for the taxpayers. And so, what I would highly suggest is we continue the programs, what we're doing for education, the spot inspections to help kind of provide that enforcement, and if we catch someone, if we can, let's make that a learning experience, not just a, here's your fine and away you go. I do like some of the innovation that the county's been doing, where they've been using drones to take a look at lakes. I think the program at Medicine Lake was an idea, and I think we can use technology to try to capture that. We need to look at all aspects of what those invasive species are affecting our waterways, and make sure that we're doing everything we can, but make no doubt about it, proactive education is the best solution for this problem.
Ms. Pittman?
You know, this is a very interesting topic for me, because prior to running for office, it was not something that I researched or talked about. As a new candidate, you learn so much, and I'm so really excited to be learning about these things. A lot of people told me, when I knocked on doors, I started knocking on doors back last October, and someone brought up the subject of buckthorn, and they said that we have a buckthorn problem in Brooklyn Park, and I learned that one of the things that we need to do more is to bring the county, the DNR, and the city together to have those discussions, just like they're having those discussions in Minnetonka. And I know that if we don't have those conversations and bring all those partners to the table, that we'll continue to have problems, and I'm just a strong believer that if we do it in one community, we should be able to do it in this community. The DNR, the city, and the county should absolutely come together, and as your county commissioner, I will bring those parties together to make sure that buckthorn is not bringing distraught travesty onto our lands and into communities' yards.
Thank you. Do you agree with the county's declaration of racism as a public health emergency? Why or why not? Ms. Pittman?
I have to say that I do. I've worked for the county for over 18 years, and I currently work in disparity reduction. For the past three years, I've worked in disparity reduction, so I have sat in a lot of rooms where we've discussed the issues that we have internally and externally. The county has spent a lot of time on an environmental scan, and I've been in the room having those discussions. So I know that for some people, it might be a very uncomfortable conversation, really getting to the point of understanding that we absolutely have some of the worst disparities in our state, and we cannot continue on the way that we have. We have to get past our uncomfortability and name it, and I think what the county has done is named it, and really allowed us to come together and finally create a framework to build strategies, and we've done that by creating, you know, 21 priorities based on how the county wants to move forward in reducing these disparities in education, employment, income, transportation, and justice. And I am so excited that we're finally at a point where we can start to deal with the issues we have and come together as the amazing community that I know we can be.
Thank you. Mr. Lundie?
Yes, I do agree with the proclamation. I do believe that racism is evident and does affect so many people, but I, what I worry is, it's one of those, what I call, make a politician feel good statements, which is, politicians get a passive thing and say that, here's what the problem is, and we're going to do something about it, and they don't actually do something about it. If you look at Minnesota, for years, decades, we've talked about the effects of racism, we've talked about the effects of barriers, we talked about these disproportionate lack of opportunities for certain peoples of diverse backgrounds. Minnesota is not just bad, every, one of the worst in the country as far as these gaps. And so, what I challenge is, is actually do something about it. It's not enough to say that something's bad, and then we all go home and think about it, or we have these plans, it's what we do. What I would like to do is create measurable activities and say, is this making it better? And if it's not, stop doing it. I don't endeavor to try to say that I am going to act like we're going to do something and then not deliver results. If we can measure things, we can prove that we're making a difference, and if we're not making a difference, do something different. There are people suffering in these gaps, and they deserve results, not promises.
Thank you. Hennepin County is home to many businesses of all sizes. Many of these businesses have been impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. What can the county do to help bring these businesses back? Mr. Lundie?
I'd bring first and foremost, I've been living, eating, breathing COVID and its effects on businesses. My inbox has been filled with people who've lost their jobs, companies have lost their buildings, people who have sucked their life savings into starting a business, and then two months later, it's gone because of COVID and what happened. And so, there's some really serious effects on what's happening in our community's whole businesses are just disappearing. And what we need to do is a couple of things. We need to support businesses as much as possible, make it simple and clear that if someone needs help, how they get it. We have so many micro and small businesses that are just single person who does their own work, and when they go to fill out these forms, they find out the forms are in triplicate, and they have to provide all these details and all these returns and all this, and small businesses don't have it. And these are the people of diverse backgrounds. The entrepreneurs are predominantly people of diverse background. They don't, they suffer from not having access to capital, they're the ones who are suffering the most from COVID, and as mayor, we have led the effort to try to get money into their hands with the lowest possible barrier to allow them to access this money and put it to use immediately.
Ms. Pittman?
You know, I answer that question as someone who is a small business owner and someone who has been impacted by COVID-19. The first week of July, I actually contracted COVID-19, and it was horrible. I could not, I make a natural hair and skincare products, several products, and when I had COVID, I could not create my products, I could not sell products, I could not, you know, manage my campaign, or any other things that I needed to do as a wife, you know, a mother, a grandmother, and so, I understand how tough it is to not only deal with the impact of COVID, but also the effects of COVID. Right now, businesses are struggling, some people's businesses have shut down, and I think what we need to do is make sure that, and this is what I've heard from talking to people for the last year, is businesses need venture capital, they need working capital. So when these kind of things happen, if we ever run into a situation where we're dealing with a pandemic, or a situation where businesses have to just shut down, they need to have that capital, so when they rebound, they can come back from it.
Thank you. Okay. Let's go on to one of our emailed questions. Since this office represents more than the city in which you live, during the campaign, what have you learned about the broader area you will represent? Ms. Pittman?
I have learned the beauty of District One by door knocking. I started door knocking last October, and I live in New Hope, of course, and knocking on doors and meeting residents for this past year, really to me, has been like riding in a convertible, where you just see things a little bit differently. I've had so many conversations with people, and just learning about people, the things they love, the things they treasure, the things that are important to them, that to me, has been absolutely incredible. And then having conversations with current elected officials to find out about the things that they've heard about that are important to them, and the people who live in District One. And so, that to me, has been the most amazing and educational opportunity that I've found since deciding to run.
Mr. Lundie?
Yeah, I think one thing that I step into this role as, is having already been working with the leaders in all the cities on many different issues, is predominantly transit, something that we've been working for over a decade on to get through. Just today, I met with the governor and helped lead that conversation about how important blue line is, and what we needed from the state and county officials. I think another thing is, I am a serial community engager. I love to get out there and talk to people. I always learn more than I talk, because the more I talk to people and just sit and listen, I hear about their, what their wishes are, what their pains are, what they're hoping for, what kind of things do they want to see. I think another thing that I've done, is I'm running as an independent. I work across all party lines, and that's not a slogan, that's a habit. And I think it's important, if you look at what's really affecting America, it's the fact that we cannot talk with people who have different opinions, and I think that's a shame, because what you find is, people agree on most things, but we break ourselves into party labels, we won't talk to things. When you see me go down the street knocking on doors, you know what I do? I knock on every door. I do not care what party they are, or what affiliation, I talk to everyone, and continue to do that.
Thank you. Many opportunities, including safety nets for youth, have been closed due to the pandemic-related closures. What can the county do to help support the youth at this time? Mr. Lundie?
It's been my proud endeavor for these last 10 years as mayor, to work with something called the Brooklyn Bridge Alliance. Brooklyn Bridge Alliance is a combination of Brooklyn Center, Brooklyn Park, four school districts, two colleges, and the county. We meet, eat, and breathe. What are we doing to help youth? Help them succeed, helping them avoid pitfalls, and we do that by getting out there and surveying those results and understanding, what are youth leading? We let them lead the conversation. Tell us, what are they missing? What do they want to see? And we have really focused on that. In Brooklyn Park, our youth told us they didn't feel safe, so we started to do after-school programming, opening up sessions, providing programs for them. COVID has put a big dent in that, and so, we, I, at the beginning of the summer, said my biggest fear is, we've done so much to help youth succeed by providing after-school programming, that this year with COVID, we were not going to be able to deliver some of those services. And so, it is essential, and I think you see that with how many youth have really felt disenfranchised, to provide as much continuity as we can to help those youth succeed, and you do that by making them feel important, you do that by giving them hope, and do that by listening to them.
Thank you. Ms. Pittman?
The safety nets that are in place right now, I think the county needs to double it. I believe the youth are our future, and we do not spend enough time making sure that we protect all of our children. The county definitely has strong relationships with county-involved youth, those youth who might be in our criminal justice systems, or those youth who might be in foster care. Aside from that, we absolutely have no real connection to how other kids are doing, and so, I really would propose that the county connect and have stronger relationships with our school systems, to make sure that children who might ordinarily fall through the gap don't fall through the gap, and that they have all the resources and supports that they need.
Thank you. Do you support, where is it there, county aid to be provided for the rebuilding of South Minneapolis businesses that were destroyed by the riots in May? Ms. Pittman?
I think it's important for all stakeholders to get involved in any of the destruction that happened, to the best of their ability. The county is not going to be able to do it all. I do think that the economic agencies and some grant monies and CARES Act funding, and I know that there was a lot of money raised to rebuild the businesses in South Minneapolis, and so, I think it's going to take a partnership to get that done.
Mr. Lundie?
Absolutely. I do think, you know, South Minneapolis is part of Hennepin County, and therefore, it is the county's responsibility to help out any way it can. I think one of the big challenges right now, and the true reality is, is that many businesses are holding on their waiting, and they're waiting because we all know that next March, the court case regarding those four people who helped with the George Floyd, I would say murder, some people don't want to say that, but it sure felt like that when I watched that video, is that they're waiting until after that court case, because they don't know what the outcome is going to be, and they don't know what the reaction by the public might be. And so, many business owners are holding on to their money, they're waiting. I think Hennepin County has an obligation to take a look at our fees and all the things that we're doing, and provide some immediate relief by not requiring people to pay fines and fees to cover services that they normally would do. We could help in little, small ways to make those opportunities, so that those businesses, when they are ready to launch and ready to get back into business, that we're there to support them, not penalize them, because they haven't been able to keep up with things. We have the responsibility, the long-term effect of that support will help that area rebuild.
Are there additional laws you want to see enacted to restrict the police and their use of force against citizens? Please explain why you feel these additional restrictions are necessary, and why or there is, why you think there might not be a need? Mr. Lundie?
Yeah, I think one of the things that, in Brooklyn Park, we have done, and I'll just speak about the police force that I help supervise, is we were early on involved with Cities United, my brother's keeper, with the Obama Foundation, to specifically look at what can police do to be innovative, be respectful, and try to be responsible to the public that they help protect. And so, what we've done is, when the Obama Foundation released their eight points that every police department should adhere to, and I was asked, do you support that? Answer was yes. You know why? Because we helped write those eight points. We were in the room innovating with that and trying to live that out. We have ways to go, we have things we do, but I think looking at how things work and trying to get rid of things. People tend to think that there's this hidden policy, and there never is. What there is is human interactions, and what we need to do is provide people with opportunities and the idea that when they call police, if they have to call police, or maybe they don't need to call police, they get people who help them with mental health challenges or addiction issues, that they get the right response, a respectful response, that they feel like the county cares about what they are as a human being.
Thank you. Ms. Pittman?
Would you please repeat the question?
Sure. Are there additional laws you want to see enacted to restrict the police and their use of force against citizens? Is the bulk of the question.
I think that, for one, the county does not create laws, but the county can create a resolution around laws that they agree with, with, at the state legislature and on a federal level. I think that, you know, we all know right from wrong and wrong for right, wrong from right, and some of the things that we've been seeing from law enforcement on TV absolutely needs to stop. I am a law enforcement major, and, you know, in my studies, I learned a lot about mediation and community engagement, and how to deal with your community, and how to work side-by-side with law enforcement. And so, I would absolutely support law enforcement learning how to have greater relationships with our communities. I think it's, that is very important. For me, we've seen this week with Mr. Chauvin being released, that our bail system is not fair, and so, that's something that I would actually, absolutely stand up and say that we need bail reform in this state.
Thank you. During this campaign, what is the single thing you learned, the biggest thing that you learned about Hennepin County during your campaign? One thing. Ms. Pittman?
That's a tough question for me, because I've worked for Hennepin County for 18 years, and I'm not saying that I know it all, because I absolutely don't. I've learned a lot of intricacies about the work that happens at Hennepin County, because of course, when you're working on the ground and touching a lot of different things every day, including managing a contract of $2.5 million, and working closely with the board and administration, you think you know a lot about the county. But I've absolutely learned a lot about the county's legislative platform and priorities in a way that I hadn't really understood before. So this, running for office has really, really allowed me to dig deeper into the work that happens at Hennepin County, especially in Health and Human Services, because that's the one department that I've never worked in, but running for office, I've had to learn a lot about our Health and Human Services Department.
And Mr. Lundie?
I think the most common question I get is, what's the county do? And what's the county commissioner do? And so, I think people are just kind of disconnected from what is the role of the county? What is the county? The county is everywhere, but then it's nowhere, because people don't see it. They see their city, they see construction crews, they don't realize that county money is helping to fund roads, that what is a county road is not a city road. And so, most residents, I think, kind of like, that's the common question I get, you know, they'll, they'll take my information, and then they'll say, so what's a county commissioner do anyway? And so, I think that idea that we should help inform the public, that we do spend a lot of money, $2.5 billion, as we talked about tonight, and I think people don't realize, where does it go? And I think when people are informed and they buy into it, I think people feel better about the value of the services they're getting, and so, I think that one of the efforts we should do is help educate the public. We assume people know what the county does. A lot of the most, my number, the highest number of questions I got is exactly, what does the county do? And the number two is, what does it, that county commissioner do? And so, explaining that so that people understand it helps make for a better informed populace.
There we go. We'll move on to our closing question. In summary, how do you best, how do you intend to best serve your district and move the county forward? We'll start with Mr. Jeff Lundie.
So first, I want to thank Twin City Chamber and the League of Women Voters for sponsoring this debate. It's hard during this COVID economy and all this reality to get out there and actually talk to people, and so, I hope that people listen to both of us. We both mean well as candidates, and we both want to help people, and so, I think that people will watch this and get a good idea of that exactly, unlike some of the public forum discussions where it just divides into fighting. I think the thing I deliver on is results. Every lit piece I've ever dropped as mayor and councilmember has the word "results" in it, and it's because that is all I care about. I don't care about politics, I don't care about this, I don't care about that. There is one thing that I want to deliver, is if I'm going to say I'm going to help you, you should be able to see it, measure it, and be able to count on it. If I say that I'm going to help build roads, then you should see the roads. If I'm going to help people, help youth have a better opportunity, you should be able If I'm going to help people, help youth have a better opportunity, you should be able to measure that. That is all I care about. It's my only focus is about delivering things. I don't care about anything else but helping people realize what they're after.
And Ms. Davana Pittman?
I am so honored to be here tonight. Running for office for me has been one of the most incredible things that I've ever done before. I've learned so much. I am running because I believe in putting people first, and I know that I will bring a fresh perspective and I will bring clarity to a blind spot that has been missing in this district. I so look forward to just having a place in this community where we can bring all of our community members along to help us govern in District One. For me, it's not about running to win an election, but it really is about bringing the community into a place and into a comfortability in the county where they've never felt that before. I believe that people need to have housing, I believe people need to have jobs, and I believe that the county should use their resources to do that, and I want to make sure that we bring a different perspective that we've never had in this seat before. Thank you.
Once again, on behalf of the League of Women Voters and the Twin West Chamber of Commerce, I would like to thank the candidates, I'm going to say two amazing candidates, District One, you are lucky, for agreeing to participate in tonight's forum. I would like to thank the voters for viewing and participating by submitting excellent questions, and I would also really like to thank our friends at CCX Media for their continued support of the League of Women Voters and our shared mission to provide[1776.35]